Okay, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
And Jen second it.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, aye. I will now open the regular meeting at six thirty-two, thirty-three, let's say. And first thing on the agenda would be the appointment of a new board member. And I need a motion.
Motion.
For?
For.
Todd Ordway. Okay. Ordway.
Ordway.
Ordway. There you go. And I need a second.
Second.
And any discussion, hearing none, all in favor. Todd, you might as well come up and take a seat. Yeah, she's right in there. Okay, and welcome to the board.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. Hearing and seeing none, okay. Now we're gonna go right to the presentations. The Southshire Challenge Project, Laura Boudreau and Sue Phelps. Okay. Hang on just a second, make sure you get that. There you go.
So, we came across a challenge that was provided through the SVSU and the Bennington Workforce Task Force. And they presented the whole SVSU with these challenges. And they were meant to connect businesses and manufacturers and town officials with students and to give them experience. And one of those challenges was appropriate for the elementary school level. And we jumped on the challenge when we heard what it was, which I'm not gonna, I'm gonna let it be a surprise 'cause the children are gonna share it with you. It's been amazing. We, it's just been a great experience and we can't thank the, the school district and the town of Bennington for the opportunities that they've provided. And the children will share them with you. But we did want to let you know that we were able to match this challenge with large chunks of our curriculum. We're doing a great deal of writing. The children are writing about the things that they're creating. Opinion pieces come to mind. They are doing a great deal of science work using the engineering design process. We're using math skills when we're measuring components of the things that they're creating. And they're reading about, there, we're actually, we've been given informational text resources to look at to help them create their projects. Yes? Good introduction. All right, so this is all about the kids. So, guys ready?
The fourth grade from Shasberry Elementary School is participating in the Southshire Challenge. We have been partnered with the town of Bennington to solve the following problem. What would a space look like where students could come to create, invent, study, and learn? It should be a space where kids can go with their families and it should be located in Bennington County. We use the engineering design process to guide our work. Ask, imagine, plan, create, and improve. Our first step was to imagine what the space would look like. We worked in small groups. Mr. Michael Harrington, Bennington Economic and Community Development Director, visited our class to talk about the challenge and some boundaries that we had to consider.
This is, this is our group's vision of the building. My favorite was the animal room, the gym, and the computer room. This is our group's building and our favorite was the fashion room, the cooking room, and the video camera.
Our next step was to create a master list of all our ideas. We then went through each item on the list and sorted them into four categories. Create, invent, study, and learn. Some items had to be crossed off because they did not fit into some of the categories, like the Chuck E. Cheese room. Every student made a drawing of their own space.
Mr. John Shanahan, Director of the Better Bennington Corporation, reviewed our individual drawings and created a plan for us with a goal to create a space where young people can go to prepare for the future by inventing, creating, learning, practicing, and having fun. A vision, a location that has all the rooms, teachers, equipment, and supplies needed to achieve the goal. And a plan. Share ideas, design a space, find a location, create the space, operate the space, pay for it. He sorted our ideas in categories and pointed out the things that we don't already have in Bennington. He even made us a blueprint. Currently, we are all working on our own design of one of the rooms from the blueprint provided by Mr. Shanahan. Some of us are creating 3D model and shoeboxes and some of us are learning how to create a room using a Google Drawing Program. We can't wait to share our final product with you on Wednesday, May 7th, from 6:30 to 7:30 in the Shasberry School Library. We really hope that you will come.
Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Can you repeat the date that you're gonna be presenting in the library?
Wednesday, May 7th, 6:30, 7:30.
Why couldn't we count to three when we said that last part? 'Cause I didn't understand.
Okay, thank you. Guys say thank you. Say thank you.
Very good. We need to have more presentations like that at the meeting, especially to start the meeting off, it's great. Okay, we'll go right to the action items. The financial, the treasures report for March. We also have February's in here also. If you've had a chance to look it over. Any questions?
We withdrew money from the ERCS Fund. I can't remember what that was for.
That was for, I think it was for Jan Barrett, the author that came, that, I think she came from yesterday. I think she wasn't here. Came to school and saw some kids. She's one of the adventurer, they took photographs and wrote some books.
Give me a second to...
Do you have a motion?
No, I need one.
Make the motion, we accept the treasures report that's presented.
Jen will second it?
I'll second.
All right, good. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Okay, consent agenda. We have the warrants. Number 22 for $1,445.26. Number 23 for $9,4489. 10-18, $47,175.33. 10-19, $52,923.40. $2,009, $315,718.58. Any questions on the warrants? Okay, all right, we have, also on the consent agenda, we have nomination forms. And one is... For a sixth grade, let's see, sixth grade classroom teacher, Tom St. Hillary?
Hilair.
Hilair? Okay, thank you. And for first, I think it's first grade?
Will be yes.
Okay. Amanda Frost Madison. Do I hear a motion for those?
Are we gonna put on that separately then?
Yeah, I will do them separately. I just wanna make sure we get, have discussion if need so.
Is that for first grade or second grade?
First grade.
First grade?
Amanda Frost Madison, yes.
I believe we accept both nominations.
Okay?
Second?
Second. Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, very good. And need a motion on the warrants? We're doing those separately from the nominations.
So move.
Okay. Jen second it?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor? Unanimous, okay, good.
Fran, I had one correction of the minutes.
Yep.
Actually. Minor point, but... I've gotta find it, hang on.
Page and number.
The minutes?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. These are the minutes of last month's meeting. And on page three, line 32, we were discussing the standardized testing. And line 32 attributes to Jen Arlata, "There are no standardized, as yet there are no standardized science tests." And I said to Jen, I didn't remember her saying that. If she had, I would've corrected her. There are, there is a kneecap science test every spring. So, I think that Richard, who's not here to defend himself, probably just...
We're gonna let him know.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Fran, I had a couple too.
Yep, go ahead.
Same page, three, line 16. "In need of improvement as a result of most recent kneecap assessment." It's actually from the 2012, 2013 kneecap. Not this last year. And then in line 45, it's Pet Pals, not Pen Pals.
Okay.
Minor, I know, but...
No, that's fine.
The actual school coordinator might get on me if I have to go.
Anything, anybody else?
I need to go one, Fran. Let's pile on Richard, huh?
Yeah.
Not here, so...
He's here to defend himself. Page five.
Yep.
Second paragraph down. It would be line 16. There's a reference to an 1877 charter. That should be 1870.
Okay. Is that it?
I don't know if this is the right time, but I received the Town Hall School District Board of Directors' phone. We all did?
I believe we all did. And I called Mary Lee. I said, you know, we really'd rather have Shasberrys.
Yeah.
I told her, it's actually good that we can wait 'cause we have a new board member. We'll need phone numbers and email address, so we can do it all at once. That'll be perfect.
I did, yeah, I had seen that.
Now we know how to get a hold of them.
Okay, next up, facilities.
Nothing to report this...
Nothing, okay, perfect. Okay, principal report.
I have a few things on some, some good news. We, I traveled to the Six Degrees of Montpelier last Friday for our annual trip. Alice Miller was our host, our guest's host, as we toured the legislature and the different houses. We toured the Supreme Court. And we also went to the Vermont History Museum. Spent the whole day there. The kids had a lot of fun. Learned a lot about how a bill was made. They got to participate in a mock debate on how a bill was passed. So it was a good time. It's something that I've done in the past and I think it's been happening for years and years and years. And the kids were well-prepared. They had been studying Vermont history and Vermont legislature for the past couple of months. So it was a, it was a fun trip by all. I wanna thank everyone that was involved in the sixth grade spaghetti dinner we held last, last month. We had a great turnout. I wanna thank the sixth grade parents that volunteered, everyone that donated something for the silent auction. The sixth grade raised, I think, over $4,000 for their graduation and their end-of-year trips. So it was a very successful, very successful night. I also wanna thank the PTO for the Mother-Son event that we held. It was two weeks ago. Yours truly was Indiana Jones. And we, we had an obstacle course built in the gym and the moms and the sons ran through the obstacle course together and ran for time to see who the fastest mother and son were. It was a good time. It was a really good time for us. It was, I had a great time just being Indiana Jones and his tiny kids. It was fun. I had the hat and everything. It was, it was a good time.
Do you have the whip, Jeff?
I did not have a whip. We could not find a whip in time. I think, I think some parents might've ran faster if I had the whip. On Tuesday, which, yesterday, myself and a sixth grade teacher and a second grade teacher went to the one-to-one computing conference in Fairleigh, Vermont, at Lake Maury, where we, we just, we heard from several schools using different devices in a one-to-one ratio. So there were students where, each student had their own computer at different levels. Some were the whole school, some were on certain grade levels. And we learned a lot about some devices that we may be looking at for, for next year. It was, it was a good conference. And we, a lot of great research was done that day with these two teachers and myself to figure out what we wanted for next year. We'll take that back to the tech committee before we make any decisions. And finally, we will be having a math professional development day on Friday. Bill Atwood's coming. Highly recommended, Bill Atwood from, from Battle Leep. He, he's pretty a dynamic classroom. He'll be doing some model lessons with some kids. Teachers observing and then having a debriefing session with those teachers. And hopefully, he's somebody that can come back and return next year and continue with some, on math professional development with the staff. That's all I have.
Okay. Dana? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, is there any question?
Is, is Friday a, schools in session?
Schools in session, yeah. We'll be having some, some subs to cover for teachers while they, they observe a lesson, have a debriefing. So they'll be roughly out of the class about an hour and a half.
Donna, you're up, I guess.
I would just tag on to what Jeff was explaining about Bill Atwood coming. He's really is a great presenter because it is right in the classroom and helps the teachers see how a model lesson can be presented with all the students that they have every day. And he's also very good at integrating writing with whatever content area he presents, which in this case is mathematics. But it's really helpful in looking forward to the, the smarter balanced test that will be coming up in the future and looking at how to align those content standards and what to expect from students in terms of their responses. So he really is going to start to help teachers link those content standards to what are they looking for from students and how to teach that and how to help students with their responses. So he really is an excellent presenter and it's great 'cause he'll do it right at each grade level. And we hope to have him come back, maybe even this year if that works out for you. So that'll be good.
And actually, I should, I should mention, we actually identified areas in the grade clusters for our map scores, the winter areas that we may be struggling in, like algebraic thinking in one area and measurement and data in another grade cluster. He'll be actually doing a lesson in that area for the, for the teachers and the students. So it's really addressing areas of need.
It seems like a lot of information for just one day for everybody to take in.
It is. And then after he does the model lesson, he has a session with the teachers to sort of have a question and answer about what he has presented and the meaning of that and how to move forward with that. That's what's nice about having a follow-up visit is a lot of times he'll give sort of an assignment. So then, try this before I come back. And then they have a, can reflect on that when he comes to visit again. So it's very in-depth and right in your school. That makes it more meaningful.
Jeff, is that a district-wide program or is that just something for Shasberry?
He's going to multiple schools, I believe. Yep. He's going, is that, is that, I think schools are choosing, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So he's going to multiple schools by choice.
And focusing on specific, whatever it is, the areas of specific need here.
So is that funded by the SU?
It's funded by the Title I grants and Title II, which is just what I was going to mention to you in my report. We had a visit from the, the CFP stands for Consolidated Federal Programs. It's both Title I and Title II A grant funding that we get. It's actually a federally funded program. And they came, they come and do a, a visit on a cycle. It's supposed to be every five years. I think it's been six years since they visited the SU and came to visit several of the schools to see how the, how their funds are actually being implemented in programs in the schools. And also, they have been monitored by the federal government, so they had some new information to share with us about looking at the future and how to use those funds. So they were pleased with so many of our programs that we're doing. And they're, we're hoping to work together with our school improvement planning that Jeff has talked about with you the last couple of meetings with the Green Mountain Star program, looking at the indicators and trying to more closely align our school improvement plans so that we can put our action plans, our school-wide plan and our school improvement plans, coordinate them all so there's only one plan because it needs to really be simplified and focused on what the needs of the school are. And so we're working to include those indicators within our Title I funding and do more programs like Bill Atwood in math, which is really one of the focus areas for Shasberry School, and use that as a format to align all of our standards and the indicators for improvement with the title funding that we get. So they were, they were very helpful to us really in, in helping us align the funding and look at ways to coordinate it with other schools and also how to really focus your title grant money in areas where you need the intervention.
Was that also a district-wide inspection, if you will, or...
Yes, they went to all, all the schools or they asked, you know, to see different programs at different schools. They were here for three days and they couldn't get everywhere, but they tried to see our after-school programs and our, and all the different multi-tiered system of support in different schools just to get a comparison and see how we are aligning and moving forward.
Was there an auditing procedure involved in that as well?
They came last year for the financial monitoring. And that really, it was more about really looking at, are we implementing the programs that we say we are when we write the grant proposal?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Tim?
I have a question and I'm supposed to come up here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, by the, yeah.
I read, I believe it was in the banner, about Vermont Fiber Connect, which is a, a plan to connect a lot of institutions, particularly educational institutions, to super-high bandwidth internet. And I wrote to Fiber Connect and they wrote back that the SU is supposed to be cut into that system this summer. And I wondered what we're gonna do with all that bandwidth when we get it.
I have not heard about that. That would be, you know, but I do know that they, there was a change in some of their contracts and for broadband, and maybe this was part of it. I know that we decreased that expense for the district considerably this year and that might be part of the, part of the plan.
More bandwidth cheaper would be good.
Yes.
Figure out what to do with it.
Yes. Well, I think we know what to do with it. It'll just make everything run faster and smoother and, you know, sometimes it's hard when a lot of people use the bandwidth all at once, like in a one-to-one program or like when you have a faculty meeting and you want everybody to log on all at once. And the leg can be considerable at times. So more bandwidth would be great.
Tim, do you have concerns about what?
Well, no, I just assumed that that opened up possibilities that we haven't considered. I mean, we're talking, the, the fiber brings orders of magnitude more bandwidth to the situation. So, which, to my mind, when you're talking about needs for large bandwidth, it's almost always video that you're talking about. So the opportunity to incorporate more video, to incorporate collaborative learning, like live interaction with other students in other classes that are other countries or things like that are, are some of the possibilities that open up with that kind of bandwidth. That kind of bandwidth is not gonna add much to shipping files around because you can do that with what you have. But this is on the order of gigabit bandwidth where you can move video around, you know, like it's over the air very quickly. So I just thought it offered possibilities that we ought to be thinking about.
You're on the technology team, correct? With Frank?
Yes, and I haven't heard anything from him.
So you might direct that to him and he would be specific about it. Exciting?
All set, Donna?
Yes, thank you, Frank.
Chair's report. On the March 31st, I attended the VSBA training held at the CDC. It's, it is informative and we've basically gone over this same old, same old for the last 10 years. And I, he wanted some feedback and I told Harry Frank, who did the presentation stuff, to, that I would be emailing him my comments. They, they give you a piece of paper. Well, as you all know, you've, you've been there. And I said, you know, you really need to get into the meat of this thing. You sit there for four hours. You've already heard this. It's good for some new board members, but it's the same old stuff and you already know it. And I told him, if you could get more into teacher negotiations, you get into more what's happened, actually happening in the schools, that type of thing. This is all important. I mean, you go through the Code of Ethics. It tells you what you, you should do as a board member. You're only a board member when you're, you sit and meet as a board. And I just think it's trying to get them to change the way they do their presentation, so it's more interesting. So, other than that, and then we had the legislative breakfast this Monday at 7:45 at the central office. And there was, let's see, Mary Morrissey, Ann Muck, Bill Botso, Brian Campion, and Tim Corcoran. The CEO was there, or CFO? Rick Pembroke, CFO, right? Okay. And they talked, the legislators basically talked about what they're doing upstate, but really, we didn't need to hear that. That what they wanna do is they wanna hear from board members in the SU. And whether you can attend it or not, I think the, the good thing it would be, if you have any questions, that they're at our next legislative breakfast, instead of hearing from them, maybe they should hear from us because I was asked by two different legislators, you know, we really need to hear from you guys. What do you need in the, in the system? What's gonna help you? What's not gonna help you? Things like that. So if we could do that, and I'm not saying everybody has to attend those board meetings 'cause it is early in the morning and a lot of us work. So, I mean, that's just the way it is.
And there is no breakfast?
Well, well, there, there is fruit and there's some, maybe donuts and coffee. So, I mean, that's a continental breakfast, you and I. Okay.
You want bacon and eggs?
You want a buffet, right?
You better serve it.
What are you ordering, Larry?
When is the next scheduled legislative breakfast?
Uh, next one is June 14th. Uh, next one is June fourteenth. They chose not to have one in May, because they're running a little late, they're probably gonna be the third week in May before they're done upstate. So, on June, uh, second, if, if we can all get there, fine, I, I don't expect you to, Jen, you're working, so... But it's, it's, some of it can be really interesting, if you, especially if you have some really questions, you can get at them right there, instead of waiting.
Did they have anything to say about the consolidation or what?
That was talked about very little. And, uh, I've told them, I said, well, there's some schools, and I know Shasbury's one of them, that's really not interested in consolidation, but are open to hear more about it, but... And Sean Marie Aller was there for the state, and she's for it, but as districts, not as, you know, making them down to, I don't, I forgot what the number is, but it's, uh, she said it should be go by as districts instead of what they're trying to do.
Superintendent, yes.
Right, right, so... But that's all I had as chair, and like, you have any questions of me? That's it, okay. Next is a District One update, um, Rick Pembroke was going to do this, he apologizes, he's in Stowe, Vermont, so, uh, we're gonna hand these books out. And what this is, the updated Shasbury School District Configuration Analysis. These are for the board, and I have rest here, as for the public. And I have one for Derek. Oh, yeah, why don't you handle, you know, south people, that's a good idea. And Rick, at our next meeting, will be giving a report on that.
Do you have one down here for Frank?
Yeah, I got two more, there you go. Anyway, he'll give in depth a report on that to the board, and, uh, Larry will also chime in with, with any information that he has.
The only, uh, Mr. Gillies was given a draft copy of this.
Yes.
Uh, so he's familiar with it, and his recommendation was that the board take time with it to, to make sure that they're comfortable with it.
Yes.
Any questions that they have, he'd be very interested in hearing and, and, uh, want to address if, if it was appropriate for him to do that. But he thought it would be much more valuable, uh, to come in after everyone's had a chance to, to look at it, and, uh...
That's Mr. Gillies, you're talking?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So we might, we, he might come and speak to us in a month or two, that, what you're saying?
And really, that's, that's, I don't know.
Okay, no, I, no, yeah, maybe it was...
I thought about a coming day, no?
Yeah, okay, so, so, uh, let me back up then, can you give us an update on what, what he's done, if anything, today?
Basically, he's, he's at the same point he's been for the, the better part of the month, he's been looking at, uh, um, the analysis, he's looked at, uh, a couple of reports that were done in the past that, uh, had some information in there that, that may set a direction. But again, what he's trying to do is gather as much as he can and, and then write a, um, a proposal or a paper on the proceed, the proceeding as per his suggestion after that. So it, it's been kind of a moving target, because at different points in the last couple of months, things have floated in that, uh, uh, he should be aware of and, and so rather than keep coming and going back and forth on it, Dave, uh, just said, let's take our time and make sure we have everything as much as we can at one time and, and do our presentation based on that.
And the reason why, uh, we had Rick do this again is because we wanted current numbers, so we're not dealing with numbers that were four or five years ago. We needed to make sure we were dealing with the current situation at this point.
And Rick did the previous report, you may remember, and that was back in two thousand nine.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we're still dealing with the same folks, and, and I think that's great, because, uh, with Rick on board to ask, to answer any questions, it's all coming from the same source, and, uh... And the numbers have changed, uh, the school numbers have changed dramatically. So...
So this is, if, as we look through this, this is ultimately, uh, an analysis of what the budgetary impact would be on the Shasbury District if the ID District were, um, melded into Shasbury?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Are you in the other category now?
Yes.
Okay. I have one.
Okay.
Under other. Next Monday is, I'll be wearing my Lister hat, and, uh, the state is what I call looking under all the cushions for available tax dollars. And what they've done is, is assign the Listers in, in the communities that they serve, uh, the responsibility for measuring all of the so-called non-profit or non-taxable properties in that community, to actually create a value for those properties. Uh, where that goes from there, I, I really don't know what they're thinking, but it, it has been a part of our assignment this year, and so we're gonna actually measure the school next Monday. So if you see us walking around, we're, we're not getting ready to sell it or anything, we're just, uh, we're just, uh, getting ready to establish a value for it, so...
That's something, so that's gonna be everybody in the, the state of Vermont? No matter what? Okay.
I hope that so far is the same, uh, Fran.
I was just asking.
I know it will be Shasbury. But, uh, Firehouse is another building, uh, Cole Hall, um...
Wow.
The Grange, uh, there's, there's a sprinkling, uh, some of the churches, uh, Robert Frost property, uh, there are a lot of, uh, non-profit or non-taxable properties in Shasbury, and, and it's our role to assign a value to those properties.
Okay. Very good. Anybody got anything else?
I have another, real quick, I don't even know if it, uh, I just saw this today when I was coming to school, coming into the parking lot today. The sidewalk ends on the other side of Buck Hill there.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't notice a side, a crosswalk there in the road, has there ever been one there?
I think there's...
There was some kid crossing there today, and I just didn't see a crosswalk there, and I didn't know if...
There's a crosswalk at the, at the end of the park.
Is there one here, I think?
Right by the play, a part of the playground.
There is, that goes across the road.
There's one there, yeah, that's, that's a...
So maybe it's just, uh...
Kids are going across the...
It's not lighting, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is that, is that paint?
Painted, yes.
And it's visible now, 'cause I know that sometimes the crosswalks, even down at the corner, get...
I just know kids are gonna start walking more to school now and, uh, things like that, so...
Just wanna mention, there was, uh, an informal inspection done by another member from administration from another school here today. And there were high compliments paid to the busing, uh, situation out here and how it's been handled.
Yeah.
Very, uh, that's, that's a good situation, or at least a help.
It'll get better. Okay, anybody else? Here and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright. Jen seconded, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and welcome again.